I'd like to welcome you to this final presentation of the Integrated Resort Gaming Information Presentation being put on tonight by the Minister of Tourism and Transport, the Honorable Sean G. Cockwell, JPM. We'd like to recognize other members of Cabinet who are here, one who's just walked in. We'd like to recognize members of the Senate who are also here. Particularly pleased to see two members of the Development Team from Morgan's Point Limited, Mr. Nelson Hunt, Mr. Craig Christensen, and others from the East End, the West End, and from the city, who are interested in how Bermuda plans to move forward in providing a new form of entertainment for our guests coming to Bermuda. We will be having tonight, in a couple of seconds, a presentation from the minister. After that presentation is done, Mr. Magnus Hannigolf, to my far left, will circulate amongst the crowd to do a question and answer period. The question and answer period will be based on each person having access to the mic for a period of two minutes. We want questions relative to the presentation only, not the color of the weather outside. Ha ha. We, of course, want to give everybody a chance, so we'd like, if there are follow-up questions and you really feel passionate about it, please let everyone else have a turn first. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to have here, to my left, my immediate left, Minister Sean Cockwell. Beside him, the Attorney General, Mr. Mark Penningill. And I turn the meeting over now to the minister to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can everyone see the screen? Fine, good. As Senator Brangeman stated, and I'd like to thank him, this is the third of the public meetings that we're going to have on the presentation of the Integrated Resort Casino Model for Bermuda. We will be meeting in camera with the social services industry. They asked to have a private meeting with us, so we're going to do that toward the end of the month to discuss some of their concerns and ideas of what we can do to help ensure that this industry is going to be one that's going to be healthy and productive going forward. So, thank you all for coming tonight, and we will entertain your questions at the conclusion of the presentation. Now, the aim of the town hall meetings, we had one in St. George's, one in Somerset, and now here in Hamilton. This one was postponed because of industrial action a few weeks ago, and lo and behold, having it here today, and we understand that we may have some industrial action tomorrow, but we have to press on. But the point is that we are trying to educate and inform the community on the planned Integrated Resort Casino Gaming Model for Bermuda. And so, the question is, why did we choose the Integrated Resort Gaming Model? We did extensive research on the various models around the world, and primarily, you have models where there's a standalone casino, which is normally, where the government normally has an interest in that casino, and therefore, they'll be able to garner more profits from the casino, but they have more risk involved. They will have to put up capital in order to help with the building and et cetera. And nine times, most of the time, those particular models, those casinos, standalone casinos, depend on the local participation more than any other participation. And so, we've seen a hybrid of standalone with some small boutique casinos in the hotels, and we've seen what we, what is known as the Integrated Resort Casino Model, where the casinos are contained at the resorts. And so, because we want to have, and we need hotel development in Bermuda, we need entertainment in Bermuda, we need to increase our hotel inventory here, we need to attract high-end hotel brands to Bermuda, we felt that the Integrated Resort Model was most suitable for our overall needs, and of course, we wanted to ensure that the casinos were geared towards our tourists. Now, we've made it clear that we're not going to make it unlawful for residents to participate, but as you will see later on, there are various mechanisms in place that will help safeguard against the most vulnerable getting caught up in any issues with gaming. So, we're going to talk about the model, we're going to talk about the opportunities and benefits, the risks that are involved, the mitigation of these risks, and of course, we're looking forward to your continued input. Now, why are we here? The reality is that tourism in Bermuda has been in steady decline for the past 30 years. That's a fact. And there are other jurisdictions, some of our competitors have been seeing a renaissance and an improvement in tourism, but yet, here in Bermuda, we have seen a continuous, steady decline, and in the past five to 10 years, we have seen a precipitous decline. So, we have to do some things differently. We cannot continue to do the same thing and expect different results. Our competitors are changing, our competitors are keeping up with the times, our competitors are adjusting, but we have remained static as it relates to our tourism product. We've seen decline in our air arrivals. We went from, in our peak, about 450,000 air arrivals in 1980, I believe. That was the apex of our tourism. Four hundred, almost 500,000 air arrivals. We don't even reach that now in total tourism. We've gone from close to 500,000 air arrivals to 236,000. That's the type of decline we've had. So, clearly, if we have a decline in air arrivals, then it's going to have a significant impact on our economy and on the revenues that we generate from tourism. We haven't had a major hotel development here in some time. We certainly don't have the necessary global brands that will require incentivizing high net worth individuals to Bermuda. We say that we are a premier high-end destination, and we are, because we're a beautiful place, we are highly developed, we have a top-notch legal system and all that type of stuff, okay? So, you know, our infrastructure is very good, we don't have what's known as ghettos here, it is a beautiful, well-developed jurisdiction. But the reality is, there are high net worth individuals who would only stay in a Rich Carlton, they would only stay in a Four Seasons, they would only stay in certain high-end brands, and we do not have them. We need to get high-end brands here because we need to cater to the guests that we want to come here. And the Integrated Resort Model with a casino will be the catalyst, not the Panacea, not the cure-all, but the catalyst to bring in the hotel development, bring in our guests, the tourists here, that would help to revise tourism. Now, gaming is not new to Bermuda, okay? So, this is not a discussion about gaming, this is a discussion about casino gaming in Bermuda. We all know about Crown and Anchor, that is part of our cultural fabric. We all know about the sports betting shops that are on the island, and of course, we all know about Bingo. My lovely mother just came a few minutes ago, this is the first forum that she's attended, and I'm glad that she's here tonight. My mother loves Bingo. And I remember when I was a little boy, she used to, she used to take me to Bingo, okay? When she couldn't get a babysitter, I went to Bingo with my mom. We've had gaming here for a very long time. So, this is not about gaming, this is about casino gaming. Now, we will consider the model and its positive impact of gaming in Bermuda as it relates to three pillars: the economic benefits, the social benefits, and the benefits to the tourism product. Now, what is an Integrated Resort Model? It is not just about casinos. In fact, the casino component of an Integrated Resort is the smallest component. We're talking about the actual hotels, so there would have to be the development, the construction of the hotel. There will be restaurants, there will be shops, entertainment, convention facilities, which is very important. What's driving tourism around the world right now is what's called mice business: meetings, incentives, conventions, exhibitions. The, so you have these large groups, they go to these destinations, they have these various meetings and conventions, they go to destinations where they can enjoy themselves after the meeting. They want to have a little bit of fun after the meeting, and so, convention facilities are very important. And we're looking at a variety of entertainment, they could have a theater there, they could have something there where we can, would enhance the overall entertainment. For example, we all remember going to Fairmount, Hamilton, then, or Southampton, and they had the Follies and these of that nature. So, we have to make sure that we can not only create the resort with the casino, but it has all the other amenities, the golf course, the spa, the pool, et cetera, that will be appealing to the guest. Now, the Integrated Resort Casino Gaming License is issued to encourage hotel development. A lot of people have been talking about this over the past couple of weeks. No license has been issued, no license can be promised. In fact, at this stage, we don't even have the legal framework to be even talking about the issuance of a gaming license. Why? It's not legal. It's not legal. We still have to go through the legislative process to legalize casino gaming in Bermuda. And there will be the regulatory framework that will be set up, there's going to be a regulatory authority that's going to be responsible for issuing the casino license. I'm going to say this clearly: the government will not be issuing the license. The regulatory authority, who vets the individuals who are applying for the license, the regulatory authority, who vets the operators and the hotel developers, all the people who are going to be involved in gaming must be vetted by the regulatory body here. And they decide who is found worthy, or who should be the ones who are considered as it relates to the issuance of a license. Now, of course, government will be involved, government has to, you know, there's going to be a ministry that's going to be responsible, and that minister will be in consultation and the like, but it's the regulatory authority, very similar to the Bermuda Monetary Authority, that is currently responsible for regulating, you know, the insurance industry and the like, but there will be a gaming commission that will be responsible for regulating the casino and gaming industry. Now, the tax revenue that will be generated from casino gaming will help fund that gaming commission, will help market Bermuda as a tourism destination, will help combat the problems that may ensue as a result of gaming, and of course, will go towards the reduction of the government debt. Now, again, as I just said, the gaming commission will license and regulate casino operators, management companies, key employees, gaming-related vendors, monitor all gaming activities on island. And as the government, it is our responsibility to be proactive in increasing our policing because we have to make sure that it's properly policed, mandate the security, security is very important as it relates to the casinos, I've said this at every forum, but when we were in Singapore, the Attorney General and I, when we went to enter into the casino, we didn't go there with our passports, and then they sent us away. They said, "You cannot enter without having your passport." We went and we both have, if you can turn off your phones, that would be great, I'd be grateful, please. We went and, we both have two passports, we got our Bermuda passport that has our government stamp in it, went back down and says, "Here you go, here's identification, and we are actually here looking at your, your product from Bermuda." And they said, "I'm sorry," they kept flicking through the passport, and we didn't understand what they were looking for. They were looking for the stamp, the entry stamp that we had received when we came into their jurisdiction. And that identified us as tourists. Therefore, we did not require to have the specific identification that the residents must produce when they go to the casino. And that identification that the residents produce, then when they swipe it, they would be able to ascertain whether or not that person is eligible to actually participate in the casino. So, the security element is very important, and of course, as I've said, you'll see later on that there are certain recommendations on the table to combat antisocial behavior. Now, again, this is not just about dealing cards, this is not just about, you know, operating casino games. The resort casino will require construction workers, you've got to build the establishment, resort staff, sales and marketing professionals, table operators, administrators, security personnel, technical assistants, IT professionals, managers, additional sectors will benefit from an integrated resort as well. So, this is an initiative that can generate and create a lot of jobs. You'll see very shortly, we're talking about over 1,000 jobs can be created as a result of bringing this industry to Bermuda. Now, you will see that, we'll talk about this a little bit more in depth, but we are proposing that there's going to be an entrance fee for local admission, we saw that very effective overseas, there are going to be programs that are going to be designed, we want to be proactive. Casinos are not going to be operating later this year, or not even next year. We have some time. Obviously, we're going to have to get the development going, they're going to have to build the Integrated Resort and the like. So, we have time to collaborate with the social services industry and come up with the proper programs to have in place if needed, once we get casino gaming up and running. And there's exclusion policies that are very interesting, and these will involve what we consider people who may be vulnerable, those who are in financial distress, so if you're on financial aid, you will not be able to be eligible to participate in the casinos. There's a self-exclusion possibility, and there's also areas where people can report individuals who may be exhibiting certain issues with gaming, and then after the proper investigation takes place, if it is deemed that this person may be a problem gamer, that person can be put on the exclusion list as well. Now, we did a variety of polling. The last time we met, there was some confusion about the polls, so let me just talk about the polls. These are scientific exercises that we've been using for quite some time, particularly as it relates to elections, but this was a standard poll using the standard sample, which is around 400 individuals. These are extremely effective, engaging the mood and the will of the population, and we actually did, to my knowledge, three polls. This is the one that I'm demonstrating because this one, we specified hotel casino gaming. So, one poll, we asked, "Do you support the introduction of casinos in Bermuda?" And the result was 69% said yes. There was another poll that we just said, "Do you support casino gaming?" And I think we had 63% said yes. This one, we said, "Do you support casino gaming for hotels?" And we had a 74% response saying yes. So, you'll see here, 74% supported it, and then you can see the breakdown of that particular number, how the demographics embraced hotel casino gaming. So, residents aged 18 to 34, and males, were more likely to support hotel casino gaming. Residents aged 65 and older were less likely, but we were very encouraged that a large majority were in support. In the Bahamas, we've seen referendums there in terms of casinos and the like, and it's been very low turnout and very low support. Maybe it was in Singapore, we asked about their polling, because they didn't have a referendum, and they said that it was normally 50/50. So, when we told them that we had around a 70% support base, based on our scientific polling, they thought that that was a very luxurious position to be in. So, we feel that the majority of Bermudas appreciate and recognize the value of bringing in this industry to Bermuda. Now, the economic benefits, again, I need to be very clear because this particular statement seems to have caused some confusion. The government is not saying that we will issue three gaming licenses, or three casino gaming licenses. What we said, what I've said repeatedly is that the financial data that we have received, the recommendation from our consultants, which is the Innovation Group, and this is the organization that the former administration utilized back in 2008 and produced their report in 2009, which was the data that was used for the Green Paper of 2009, we decided to continue to use them because they understood Bermuda, they understood the lay of the land, and we wanted them to update the extensive research that they had already done. And in addition to that, almost everyone that reacts in terms of who you recommend, they recommended the Innovation Group. And based on their assessment of our population, of our air arrivals, et cetera, they felt that we can only support a maximum of three Integrated Resort Casino Licenses. That's the recommendation to the government, that anything more than three may be a saturation. The government has made no decision in terms of how many licenses it may, you know, through the regulatory authority, award. But we have said that the first one, we want to go to new development, we wanted to incentivize new hotel development in Bermuda. We need it, we need more inventory. This summer, during our peak season, when all of our hotel rooms were occupied, we had airlines coming to Bermuda half-empty. That doesn't happen in any other jurisdiction. You go to Jamaica during their peak seasons, and their flights are ram-packed. People are being left in the airport because there's no flight available. But during our peak season, when all of our hotels were full, you had airlines coming here half-empty. That is a clear sign that we don't have sufficient capacity in Bermuda. So, we need to create more capacity, if we create more capacity, then there will be greater demand coming to Bermuda. Well, how do you create more capacity? You need more hotel beds. And we want to have quality hotel beds. And then, you know, so that's one of the reasons why we believe we want to segregate the first license for hotel development. And then, we think there should be an assessment, a period of time, to see how it's going to work. Now, it may be possible, I see Mr. Hunt is here, and I see Mr. Christensen, everyone talks about, well, and today I was on the Sherri J. Show, and a few people called in, and "Mr. Hunt deserves a license, give the man a license." You know, I just want to make this point, we don't know exactly how this is going to go, and what recommendations we're going to make, but it may be very well possible that Morgan's Point is about ready to put a shovel in the ground, and then there's a response to the RFP in St. George's, and they're ready to put a shovel in the ground, and we say, "Okay, if a casino license is critical to both of those projects getting going," then we, as a government, we may say, "Well, let's issue out two," like they did in Singapore, "Let's issue out two and see how it goes." Okay? I would love for Morgan's Point to start developing, and for the Club Med site to start developing at the same time. That would be wonderful for Bermuda, that would create thousands of jobs. We have Bermudas that are out of work, that would be great, but the reality is, right now, there are no shovels going in the ground. It's just not happening right now. And so, we believe that we have to do what we can to incentivize getting a shovel in the ground, and we want to use that first license to achieve that. Now, the expected revenue from gaming, again, based on the data we received, they project that by the third year, the overall revenues, and this is from one integrated casino in Bermuda, one Integrated Resort Casino, the estimated revenues is 60 million, approximately $60 million. The proposed government tax rate on revenues right now is 10%. We've had some people say 20%. Obviously, the higher the tax, the more revenues the government will receive, but the lower the, the lower the tax, the greater the incentive for a developer and a casino operator to come to the island. So, that is still, again, is a proposal, we haven't decided what the tax rate is going to be yet, but this is, you know, approximately $6 million by year three, and this does not include hotel tax and payroll tax. Now, on Friday, the man of the hour is going to be my colleague, the Honorable Bob Richards, who I'm glad to say is here tonight. He will be presenting the budget for next year, and I certainly will not preempt what he has to say, but I'm going to say this, that we cannot get out of our economic malaise by just cutting expenses. We can't do it. We have to increase our revenues. That is the way to get out of this. We need more revenues coming into the country, and just on the revenues from one Integrated Casino Resort, we can collect $6 million more revenue, and that doesn't include hotel tax and payroll tax. Now, jobs, the construction costs and employment, just based on the construction, again, this is one Integrated Casino Model, and this, this particular, when this was done, this was not pursuant to the current RFP, we are asking for greater convention facilities, and we want to see a much more elaborate proposal, but based on sort of an Integrated Resort with a casino, they said that it would create 657 direct jobs, so these are people on the construction site, building the Integrated Resort. There will be an additional 171 indirect jobs, 285 induced jobs. This means that these people, because now they're working and they're generating income, they're going to be spending that money somewhere, and that's going to create more job opportunities here, so we're talking about a total of 1,113 jobs that may be generated from one Integrated Casino Resort. And then, once it is built and is ready to rock and roll, then the ongoing casino operation jobs, 512 direct, 154 indirect, 247 induced, a total of 913 jobs. So, this is a tangible, real initiative, opportunity to create jobs in Bermuda. I understand that there are individuals who don't support gambling, I understand that. My father is one. And I'm telling you right now, you will not catch my father in the casino. I bet my mom may go, but you will not catch my father in the casino, okay? That's their choice. But we have thousands of Bermudas who are out of work, and the government is responsible for coming up with initiatives and proposals to help create jobs in Bermuda, and this is a tangible and viable initiative. Now, the ongoing fiscal impact from casino operations. Now, here, as I said earlier, this, this line here shows the direct revenue generated from the tax. So, 60 million, I'm sorry, 60 million is the overall revenue, at 10%, we get 6 million. But off of the employment tax, that's an additional 4 million, off of the hotel occupancy tax, an additional 1.4, so it will be a total of $11.4 million in government revenues, and government is not putting up any capital, government is not taking any risks in this, this is the revenue that we will be collecting by year three, if everything goes well. So, the Integrated Resort will have to market their product properly, the Tourism Authority will have to market the jurisdiction property. If we all do what we're supposed to do, then we can get more tourists here, and we can generate, you know, significant revenue. And that's just off of one. Now, I think this is an interesting slide because this demonstrates the opportunities we have to induce tourists to the island, and it's interesting because we chose to, there are many slides, we have different assessments on individuals going to Las Vegas, individuals going to Las Vegas and Bahamas, and the like. But if you look at Miami, okay, and these are all east coast markets, which you all know is very close to Bermuda, two hours away. So, the total gaming trips from Miami in 2013 was 8,845,155. That's the number of people that traveled around the world just for gaming. Now, the people who went to Bahamas, there was 126,422 travelers who went to the Bahamas in 2013 from Miami. Out of that number, 26,676 went just to go to the casino. That was their primary reason for going to the Bahamas. And if you look at all of the gateways here, particularly New York, which is our closest, one of our closest neighbors, 36,170 people last year went to the Bahamas just to game, okay? So, in total, it was just under 100,000 people that we can say, "Come to Bermuda, we're a beautiful island, we're more beautiful than Bahamas, you know? Come here, enjoy the entertainment that we have here, and enjoy the culture that we have here. If you enjoy gaming, we have the product, and we believe that if we create the right product, and if we market the industry properly, then we can be enticing to this number, and that they might choose to come to Bermuda over going to other jurisdictions." And so, based on that, we looked at, if we did it right, then, and those numbers, we'll be able to attract- be able to attract 43,518 additional tourists, and this is just based on having one integrated casino on the island. Now, the total spending by induced visitors. Again, these are individuals who are just coming here for gaming. Now, this is based on, if we had three, if we had three casino resorts or resort casinos on the island, then it is estimated that the induced visitors would inject $88 million, $88 million or $89 million into our economy. Now, again, I'm repeating myself, gaming Bermuda will help reduce the national debt. It will be a 10% tax, that's a proposal right now. This is in addition to the 14% payroll tax rate and the 7.25 hotel occupancy tax rate, and again, 11.4 million just in taxes or revenue will come to the government. Now, if we had the three integrated resorts, then it is projected that the one in Hamilton might generate an annual $56 million. The one in the West End, we have Dockyard there, but we're not saying actual Dockyard, but the one in the West End would be $30 million, and the one in St. George's would generate $22.8 million per year. So we're looking at approximately $108.8 million per year, and 10% on that, if we had three, is of course, a healthy revenue for the government. Now, I want to move to the mitigating risks. Now, there've also, I've heard questions, "Well, you chose the model, and then you went to Singapore." Well, the reality is that the model was chosen based on the information and the research. We hired people to provide that research, and we were able to look at the various models, its impact, and what was best suited for Bermuda. So we decided on the model through the research, and it was substantial research, and the Gaming Committee went through that, and we decided that the integrated resort best suited Bermuda and Bermuda's needs. But now, we need to understand how to implement the regulations, how do they do it in other jurisdictions, especially jurisdictions that have been successful enough to keep the social issues at a minimum. In Singapore, which has had casino gaming for five years, after its second year, they tested the market, and they ascertained that problem gamers represented 2.7% of the population. After the fifth year, they checked the market, and it represented 2.7% of the population. So it hasn't changed. And so they have been able to implement certain safeguards that has not allowed for the increase in social problems. Now, that's still relatively early, five years is not that long. But there are other jurisdictions like London, like Geneva, like Sydney, like Aruba, they have been able to implement a very sophisticated and a very onerous regulatory structure to keep the social issues to a minimum. Now, what they do in Singapore, and we're recommending that we do some of it here, number one, there's no entry to minors. Over there, it's 21 years old, here, age of majority is 18. But since this will be on private property, we can very well negotiate with the hotel owner and operator and say, "We want 21 to be the age limit as well." This is in discussion, nothing has been decided. But first of all, no entry to minors. There's no extension of credit to locals with our premium accounts. So unless a local can establish that they're worth a certain amount and go through that process, whatever that process is, the casino will not extend to that individual any credit. What we saw over there is, you have to be able to demonstrate that you have the liquidity in order to get significant credit. They had no ATMs on the casino floor, it wasn't that far away, but at least it gave people some time to walk and think before they went and took out more money to game. This was interesting, the casino entry levy for all residents, it was $100 to get in. I mean, I first heard that, I said, "That's not much, what's $100?" But the point wasn't to keep residents out, the point was to keep the vulnerable individuals out. And so, and the point was, that those who were casual gamers, they would only game every now and then. No one's going to go to a casino four or five times in a month if they know that that's $500 right out of their pocket, just by going in. You do those things every now and then. And what we found in dialoguing with the residents there, I'll ask them, you know, "Do you go to the casino?", almost everyone I spoke to said, "No." I said, "Why not?" They said, "Because of the charge." So it was an effective deterrent. Now, there are a lot of Singaporeans who did game, but Singapore is a very affluent jurisdiction, and so the people can afford to game. But those who could not afford to game, found that the levy was a significant deterrent. And then, there was an exclusion policy. If you go to the next slide. The exclusion policy deals with self-exclusion, they coined it, family exclusion, third-party exclusion, voluntary family visit and third-party visit limit. So these were, and you have online applications, so if a person wanted to be self-excluded, they had a system where you can just go online, fill out the form there, and say that they wanted to be excluded from entering casinos. Very few people did it that way, but if you feel, you know what, "I don't want to even be tempted, and I want to put myself on the exclusion list," you can do that. I'm going to the next slide. But there's a third-party exclusion. Third-party exclusion is the government. And so the government, 25% of those who were excluded represented this particular category. The government made a decision in Singapore that if you were on financial assistance, you could not go to the casino. If you were receiving public housing, and public housing and you were significantly in arrears, you could not go into the casino. And if you were bankrupt, you could not go to the casino. The cabinet has had discussions on this, and we said, "You know what, we might want to think about, not just if you are in arrears and receiving public housing, but if you're receiving public housing, you're going to be on the exclusion list. If you have pecuniary or money judgments out against you, maybe you go on the list." We could come up with, if you owe child support to the courts, you may go on the list. So we can add to this list, based on what we think are individuals who fall into that category of being vulnerable. But this is very effective in being able to protect individuals who cannot afford to be gaming from gaming. Then there's the self-exclusions I talked about before, only 6% over there said, "I'm going to exclude myself." But what was interesting was that many of the businesses, like construction firms and the like, that had a high number of foreign labor, that was not making a great deal of income, those employers decided that they didn't want to have to be dealing with their employees having money issues because of gaming or the like, that they wrote into their employment contracts, that if you're going to work for my firm, then you have to be excluded from going into the casino. And then, that actually caught on in Singapore, and we found that accountancy firms, law firms, took the same approach. And they said, "You know what, we want to have an employment policy here at our workplace, where if you work for us, we want you to be excluded from casinos." This one is the controversial one, family exclusion. The policy over there is that all you have to do is say to the regulatory body, "I believe that my family member has a gaming problem," and then you would be, that person would be automatically put on the exclusion list, and then they would have to go and argue their case to come off. I think that's a bit draconian, but we certainly think that we should have a mechanism in place, whereas if a person can identify someone, a family member, who may be having an issue with gaming, they can report that person and say, "I think there's an issue here," and then after a proper investigation, that person can be assessed and determined that they will be excluded. Of course, all of this will require the strictest of confidentiality, and that's what is exercised in other jurisdictions. So the exclusion policy has been very effective in other jurisdictions, particularly in Singapore, to, off the bat, as you can see here, these folk, right off the bat, are not able to, they're not eligible to enter into a casino. Now, they also have what's called a National Commission on Problem Gaming, very effective body, we met with them as well, we met with the Regulatory Authority, we met with the Attorney General there, we met with various lawyers there that were involved in the setting up of the casino industry. But this particular organization works with the government, and they are appointed by the minister, they operate on a voluntary basis, and many of them are experts in specialized areas such as psychiatry, psychology, social services, counseling, legal and religious services, and they're the ones that would do a lot of the investigatory work, a lot of the recommendations to the government, flip over, in terms of what is required. And this brings together people from the employment community, from our neighborhoods, our faith community, those who have organizations that deal with young people or with older population, it deals with collaboration with public safety. So all of these entities will work together through the National Commission on Gaming to ensure that we are being proactive, and we're staying on top of any social issues which may arise. Okay, I didn't realize we were that far down. So we believe that there are significant benefits, we've seen the jobs that can be created, we've seen the economic benefits that can be created. I believe fundamentally, that if we do this right, it's not going to be the solution, but it will be part of the solution. And as a jurisdiction, we have to adjust. We have to be appealing to our guests. As I said, I had a debate with someone the other day who's against gaming, and in that debate, they kept saying, "Well, I want this, and I want that, and I think this," and I said, "Well, that's fine, but should we be in the hospitality business?" And he said, "Yes, we should." I said, "Well, if you're in the hospitality business, it's not about what you want, it's about what your guests want." And if you don't provide what your guests want, guess what? They're not going to come. Because they have options. They have options. And I'm not saying this to be derogatory, but I've been to many other jurisdictions, since being the Minister of Tourism, and I'm here to tell you that they, our competitors, are in the tourism business. We are doing it for a hobby. We're doing tourism for a hobby. If we want to get serious about tourism and get in the tourism business, we have to make bold decisions. And we have to step outside our normal understanding, our, what we say, our comfort zone, and do some things differently. And there were concerns in London before it was introduced, there were concerns in Singapore, great concerns in Singapore before it was introduced, in Geneva and these other jurisdictions, jurisdictions very synonymous with Bermuda. London, Geneva, Sydney, those are financial jurisdictions. And nobody can bring me an article right now about London, where it says that casino gaming has tarnished their jurisdictional reputation. Because it hasn't. They've done it well. And so we have a responsibility also to do it well. That's why I asked the Attorney General to accompany me to Singapore, so we can get the regulatory structure, we can ask the right questions, we've been able to procure a great deal of information, because we have to get this right. And we will do it if we all work together. So thank you very much.